The June 1st, 2009 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. We will ask you to stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We would like to welcome all of you in attendance tonight as well as those that might be watching on cable TV Channel 7. The next item is the consent. I have two items to be pulled, Item D and Item I. We will discuss these two items separately. I will accept a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilman Rye?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Karen Yanis?
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on Woods Chapel PUD concept. Oh, I'm trying to jump the gun. Trying to get you all out of here. Item D, Councilman Fowler asked for this to be pulled, and I will defer to Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I work for this at Lake City, and this has to do about selling water to them, and I need to go ahead and say something from that.
Okay. Is there a motion from someone other than Councilman Fowler for the approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, we have Item I. It's a resolution approving a towing contract for the police department. Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. I was just going to say that we seem to get a flurry of information, I think every time when we do this towing contract, so I don't want to say this is new, and I know staff has worked hard on this one, there's been a lot of flurry from the towing companies. I've seen emails that I've not contacted or they've not contacted me. But I, just with all the information flowing, I now have time to hear all the sides on this, so I'm going to be voting against it as it currently stands right now because there's just an awful lot of new information coming our way even since today.
Okay.
And it works, since we're not going to look the lowest bidder, that did concern me a little bit, so I'm going to look into it.
Any other comments, Councilman?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess I would like to hear from staff a little bit of why, if they have an explanation for the extremely wide range of bids here. You know, for a normal tow, running from 75 to $5 does not seem reasonable in my mind.
Okay. Let us defer to Chief McCoy, and he also has Sergeant Walker here as well to let them make comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. In our process, Captain Jim Snyder and Sergeant Al Walker, who is with us in the audience, conducted a careful review and verification of each bid. During that process, I don't know if there was any discussion about the huge discrepancy between bids. It is very unusual, and without asking the tow companies, I would not be able to answer that unless Sergeant Walker was, got some information on why that huge discrepancy.
I did speak with the representatives of each company, and if you notice, two of the bids are rather low, and one was very low.
Right.
The people in that company felt that they could make up the difference with a solid operation and some other operations that they would gain and the additional business that they would bring in by having this contract. I forwarded that information to Captain Snyder, but I think that was the reasoning behind their ability to go with that such a low bid. And the other thing is they were aggressively seeking the contract.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question? Councilman Shaver?
Yes, Your Honor.
Are there any other questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just to be clear, I have been contacted by one of the bidders on this and asked me to do, or to do some study on some of the things, and I did do some checking on a tow lot that Fleming Auto Center was using. The question was brought up about whether it was even big enough to handle it, and in my research and calling, it looked like it was able to handle the number of vehicles they were talking about needing for the city contract. It also had an inside storage area and a office space, according to the person that owned the property. I did have some complaints, and this goes back a while. Staff will probably remember this, but we used to make an announcement at city council meetings about not being able to park across the street here due to the towing and the situation with that. And with my association with the downtown business merchants, I'm sure some of you can remember on this council, we had a Holiday Express come through one Christmas and had several vehicles towed during that period of time and had some complaints at that period of time with the tow company for being what they would describe as being predatory. I'm sure there's justifications on their side on everything, but there were some, a lot of vocal complaints going on at that time. And that is one of the companies that is presently on the bidding list, too. Just I'd like to pass that information along.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to close with comments that I had an opportunity to review the documents, had an opportunity to meet with staff. After careful consideration of all the data that I had, meeting with staff, I came to the conclusion that the staff recommendation was proper and the best bid. So I do support staff and their recommendation for this contract. Okay, that being said, I would accept a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Case 4-2, motion carries. Now we will move to the public hearing on the Woods Chapel PUD concept plan that was continued from the May 18th council meeting.
Your Honor, for this public hearing, PUDC-409-2120, the city would like to offer one exhibit which includes a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, April 25, 2009, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letters sent to property owners. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of this public hearing.
Okay, Ms. Allen, would you like to make a presentation on behalf of the city?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. All right. Thank you. Before you is a request for the Oaks at Woods Chapel Plan to Development Concept Plan from I-70 Partners LLC. At the planning commission meeting last Wednesday, May 27th, the planning commission heard the same request at their public hearing, and there are a number of questions, primarily regarding access as well as the existing natural conditions in terms of floodplain and drainage ways on the site. So I'll just focus some of my comments briefly on those and defer the rest to the applicant, hopefully to give us some additional information, hopefully answer some questions as well. On the screen before you is the proposed PUD, and I'll zoom in and clear this up a little bit. I think that shows a little bit more clearly. You can see at the northwest corner of Valley View Road and Woods Chapel is the proposed PUD, proposed to be built in several phases. Phase one are the immediate corner, northwest corner there. This essentially shows phase one with the access to Woods Chapel Road as well as to northwest Valley View Road. Just a little background on the property itself. Obviously, you're very familiar with this considering the recent CID and TIF discussion and approvals. Back in 2004, the property was rezoned from AG, which is agricultural, county agricultural, to general business, as well as to, excuse me, both of those to a general business with restricted overlay, as well as at the northwest corner. Kind of that area there, MF-14 low-density multifamily residential. That was early 2004. PUD concept plan entitled Blue Springs Gateway Village was approved at that same time. The concept plan itself expired two years later, 2006, after no permits or construction was done. Planning Commission then, just last summer, if you recall, recommended a approval to rezone, a request by the city to rezone the northern portion of the property from that MF-14 to GB, so the entire property project is under the GB zoning. Planning Commission also approved a for-sale preliminary plat and recommend approval of the for-sale final plat in May of last year, and that was before this council on July of last year. So that's kind of where the project stands. Now they're moving forward the PUD concept plan approval. As noted in the staff report that went to the planning commission, the applicant will still need to file preliminary and final plats, again, taking it to that development stage beyond just the for-sale plats, as well as a site plan and design review and a master sign plan for the development. So the area in question here, there's been much discussion of a CVS Pharmacy, the main building there that you see, and they would still need to go forward with those plats as well as the site plan and design review. So there's still some additional reviews that need to occur following this consideration tonight. Again, the project itself is planned to be constructed in three different phases. They're called development areas one, two, and three. They're kind of spelled out in the documentation attached with the council information form, so I won't go into that in any great detail. There's also additional information provided by the applicant near the back of that, those attachments dated April 17th. That talks about the schedule of the project in terms of how they're sequencing the phases. It's a little bit more generalized than what you saw with the CID and TIF materials, so I'll defer to the applicant to maybe clarify that in terms of their phasing with those three different development areas. And also gives a summary of the PUD itself. Again, being a PUD concept plan, there's some just very generalized information in terms of open space landscaping, architectural character and such. However, the applicant did provide, again, near the back of the attached materials dated April 16th, information on their proposed building construction. Again, generalized in nature, but trying to at least acknowledge some cohesive development construction, I guess, or design, I should say, of the overall center. With that, again, access was discussed at the planning commission meeting. I think that was brought back home and clarified at the end of that discussion. Again, I'll defer to the applicant to talk more about that. It's not unlike what you heard with the CID and TIF discussion over the last few meetings here at the city council, but we are kind of deferring to those TIF agreements for information or regulation of those accesses temporary and permanent as well. So if there are questions on that, I would kind of point back to that documentation rather than what was submitted with the PUD concept plan. With that, again, staff and the planning commission recommend 12 different conditions. A lot of that has to do with that future development phases as it comes forward with plats, site plan and design review and such. And again, it does emphasize that all of those approvals, as well as information regarding the floodplain designation accesses as well, all need to be finalized prior to moving forward with any kind of construction. So with that, again, planning commission recommended approval unanimously in a vote of nine to zero with those 12 conditions at their meeting last week.
Are there questions, Ms. Allen?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Shaver?
I did not watch the planning commission, so let me preface it that way. Maybe my ques, some of my questions were answered there then. If so, I apologize. But I'm a bit confused with the accesses. Let me ask a couple of questions. One, how many additional access points will this add?
Your Honor and Councilman Shaver, additional in terms of what's, than what's existing?
There today.
We'll add four additional accesses. Actually, yes, three, excuse me. Two additional ones on Woods Chapel, potential of moving or relocating the northernmost one at Carlfelt. And then, so those are, that's one relocation, two additional ones to the south of that, and then one on the north side of Valley View. So I can kind of point that out.
Well, I'm concerned on Woods Chapel, not Valley View.
Right. Here's one, two additional ones. This one is new, however, it's being considered a relocation of this northernmost current Carlfelt access, but I'll defer to Public Works and the applicant in terms of more detail on that.
So there's really three additional or two? Will the one close at going into McDonald's?
I can't say yes or no. It's one of those, it's, I think the CID or the TIF information actually labeled it quite well, which, if I may, it referenced it as, just a moment here. I think it simply called it something to the fact of, here we go, conceptual improvements being evaluated by the city of Blue Springs. So the northernmost access is exactly that. It's conceptual in nature. My understanding is that there would just be the one, either Carlfelt or the southern alignment, one or the other.
Then the entrance to, was it Wise Guys, that will remain?
That, I, is dependent upon that final connection there, either Carlfelt or the southern alignment. It's one or the other, not both.
I guess, carrying that a little further, you know, you have a quotation from the comprehensive plan which says, "Non-residential uses may access an arterial street through frontage road or strictly controlled entrances." I guess, how does this plan meet that?
Strictly controlled entrance, I believe, would be how that would be defined. There is going to be right-in, right-out, and there is a, permanently, as well as a temporary, more full access at the north side. I can show that more clearly here. This is what, I would say is temporary, but in terms of the access to this connecting drive to the north-south, this is that frontage road. And so that would essentially qualify for what you're referring to from the comp plan. This would act as that frontage road accessing these lots on either side, but again, there would be an access back to that north-south frontage road. Point being, this lot does not directly access to Woods Chapel. This lot does not, so you don't have four access points, you only have two.
Okay. How are they controlled for that definition?
Median. So it'd be controlling turn movements into and out of the site.
Are there acceleration and deceleration lanes?
I would defer to Public Works in terms of the design on that, but I believe there would be northbound, there would be, there would be turn lanes, and presumably deceleration lanes going southbound as well into the site for the ultimate design.
Okay, yes.
I guess the biggest issue, Councilman, is this is going to be a phased approach. There are going to be some modifications to Woods Chapel that will happen before the ultimate improvement is made by the city that will allow access to the property. This access point here will always be controlled with a median, be right-in, right-out, but until the full improvement is made, there will be a median break that will allow northbound traffic on a left end.
Well, I'm concerned when everything's done. I understand all kinds of intermediate points.
When everything's done, access to the property will be by a signalized intersection at some location that hasn't been determined, and right-in, right-out that is controlled by a median, a raised median.
Does the right-in, right-out have acceleration and deceleration lanes?
I imagine there'll be some deceler, because the southbound is going to be continuous right, so that southbound route can loop around and take a right turn and go westbound.
I guess where I'm coming from, my concern is traffic flow on Woods Chapel. And if I look at our citizen survey, it said the number two item that we need emphasis on is floor traffic. That was in general. Number two under transportation was traffic flow on Woods Chapel. And I guess when we add access points, in my mind, that reduces traffic capacity, I think.
Well, actually, the AM flow is actually being constrained by only a single left turn for eastbound to northbound. Okay? And that's going to go to a double, left turn, eastbound to northbound, from Valley View to northbound. And then the PM flow is constrained because people queue up and they can't make continuous movement to go westbound.
And that's a separate project.
Well, that's a separate project, but those are both the solutions that are going to be constructed in order to, in this court.
I guess I'm concerned of the impact of this project on the traffic.
Well, this project is only going to add a right-in, right-out, controlled right-in, right-out, and then a signalized intersection at some point.
Okay. So we're adding two access points?
We're adding two access points, but right-in, right-out doesn't compromise the efficiency of Woods Chapel.
I guess in my mind, the only way it doesn't is if you have acceleration and deceleration lanes. Otherwise, it does slow down traffic.
Yeah.
If I'm following a car and he's going to turn, I'm going to slow down behind him. That's restricting traffic flow.
Well, there'll be, there will be a provision made for a continuous right-turn lane that will allow through movement to move farther to the east to get around that turning car.
I'm confused. There'll be a lane, he will have to switch lanes to get around him? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. If north is this direction, and the car is going this way, this car will, this will be a continuous right-turn lane that will, that will have a right-in, right-out entrance, and these cars will be, will have a continuous through lane to take a continuous southbound, south of Valley View.
How far does that right lane continue north?
Having designed it yet.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason we have to be that way, Councilman, is we're dealing with MODOT, we're negotiating with property owners for right-of-way, and so it's, there's not a lot I can tell you right now. The final design hasn't been approved by all parties.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I am generally concerned of traffic flow, and sometimes I think we're our own worst enemies. Residents complain about traffic, and then we turn around and add access points which just slow down the capacity of our streets.
While we're on that subject of specifically the improvements, I guess just the rough timetable, I think they were coming next summer. That would be the start of construction. Is that still the timing?
It'd be, yes, a year from now. One, that'd be what they call year one, and then what they've identified as, quote, "upon demand" for phases two and three, but they did give more specifics in terms of 2012, 2013 with the CID and TIF materials. So again, I defer that question to them for more specifics. And to just follow up, Your Honor, with Councilman Shaver, what's, this is what was included with the TIF materials at your, at your last meeting, actually at the May 15th meeting, excuse me, showing more the ultimate, those two connection points, as Oliver was pointing out. So again, that permanent access to the north is still in flux in terms of where that would be, but then the right-in, right-out, called labeled Woods Chapel access to the south. So that's the final connectivity that you're seeing.
Other questions? Okay, is the applicant or representative here for the presentation? Come in, come up and be sworn in, please.
Brett Cox with Olson Associates, 1251 Northwest Briar Cliff Parkway, Kansas City, Missouri. Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Allen's presentation. To answer a couple of your questions regarding access, the north access for phase one of the project is intended to be removed once the permanent access for Carlfelt Road, wherever that is determined to be, is finalized by your, the city's consultant, Trans Systems. And it's my understanding that they're still going through their design process, so that has not been finalized. Thank you. So the north access that you see here will ultimately be removed. The middle access will be a right-in, right-out that will remain. Also, the question regarding the schedule at this time, the schedule for phase one for the developers' portion would be to be under construction and completed next summer. Tenant construction is, of course, a little more up to their schedule rather than the developers in this case. And then for phases two and three are unknown at this point. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Questions? Councilman Edmondson?
Improvements of Valley View Road will also occur at that time?
Yes, those will occur.
In phase one?
Phase one, yes, by the developer.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor or in support of? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak in opposition to? In opposition to, close the public hearing. Now we will have an introduction and reading of Bill 4057.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4057, an ordinance approving the Oaks at Woods Chapel PUD Concept Plan.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Second reading of Bill Number 4057, an ordinance approving the Oaks at Woods Chapel PUD Concept Plan.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Councilman Rye?
Aye.
Karen Yanis, I give it an order 4241.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on the amendment of the 2008-2009 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Your Honor, for this particular public hearing, the city would like to offer three exhibits. Exhibit number one includes city council information form from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development. Exhibit number two, letter to HUD regarding the amendment to the 2008-2009 Annual Action Plan. And exhibit number three, maps of proposed project locations. These are all the exhibits that we have to offer on this particular project.
Ms. Allen, would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, thank you again, Your Honor, and members of the council. We had a staff switch here during the, during the intermission, I suppose. So Mr. Peterman, our principal planner oversees our CDBG program, is here. If there are any specific questions that I'm unable to answer off the top of my head, but do you want to show a map here of the proposed projects with this amendment? It shows proposed CDBG projects, 2009, 2010. That actual annual action plan will be before you in a couple of weeks here. You can kind of see the darker, bolded lines, Hearns to the east there, and then connection to Baumgartner Park to the far northwest of the, of the map. This is what's being proposed to be included in the amendment and in order to spend the ARRA or the stimulus funds associated with the CDBG program. This was presented to you at the last meeting and is now before you with a formal amendment as required by HUD. Again, this is a public hearing, and then we request your action on the resolution to adopt the change to the 2008-2009 plan to include these two sidewalks essentially as part of the ongoing sidewalk improvement or installation program as a part of our five-year consolidated plan.
Are there questions, Ms. Allen? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak in support of? In opposition to? to? We'll close the public hearing. I would accept a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved, Your Honor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Councilman Low?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Chair De Nast.
Next, we have an introduction and reading of Bill 4058.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 4058, an ordinance approving the final plat of Adams Dairy Landing, third plat.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Second reading of Bill number 4058, an ordinance approving the final plat of Adams Dairy Landing, third plat.
Your Honor, I move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and be assigned the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Your Honor?
Quick question?
Yes.
I'm not sure the developer is here. One of the things that was mentioned in here that staff recommended, cross easements, across access between lots, and I was wondering if the developer accepted that recommendation.
Your Honor and Councilman Shaver, yes, the applicant was agreeable to all the conditions as stated. I believe there was one.
I don't believe this was stated as a condition unless I misread it.
I'm sorry.
Just in the discussion. On page seven of eight.
I'm sorry, it's condition number seven. It's stated, page two of three of the council information form states, prior to recording the final plat, cross access between lots within area three shall be provided on the final plat.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solon?
Aye.
Councilman Low?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Chair De Nast, give it ordinance, 4242.
Next, we have the introduction and reading of Bill 4059.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 4059, an ordinance amending the Blue Springs, Missouri Code of Ordinances to add section 350.060 to make it unlawful to leave a running motor vehicle unattended.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Solon?
I had a couple of questions, and I guess that'd probably be directed to Chief McCoy. How many cars have we had stolen this year from people's driveways, and how many of those cars were from motors that were running?
Well, we didn't do justice here. If you go back to 2007, we've actually had 32 vehicles stolen that were just sitting running. Most of them were either in driveways or in like convenience areas where they watched for it. So with that extensive number of thefts, we hope this is a way that we can use education to not only just say to people, "Don't leave your car running," we can say, "It's actually illegal to leave your car running in that scenario."
You say 32 cars, and that's over how long a period of time?
Just over two years.
Two years. That answered my question, but I still have a problem with this because we're being asked to pass an ordinance that doesn't allow people to warm up their car on private property. I have a problem with this. It's big brother. I feel like it's going after the victims and not the criminals. I could see the scenario of a mom who's warming up her car for her baby and her kids, and a police officer sees it running, is going to knock on her door and issue her a citation for warming up her car. I think this is a violation of our civil liberties. I think this is too much big brother, and I strongly oppose this.
Further discussion? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, Your Honor, I guess I've got a concern with it, too. The, you know, if somebody gets some items taken in their car and it's, I mean, I've heard where they come back and they say, "Hey, was your car locked?" And they believe that it was, but until you have to prove that it was, it's like we're going after the victims of crime versus going after the bad guys. We need to chase and catch the bad guys. And trying to cite somebody for leaving their engine running if it's on their property, I just don't see, I mean, I appreciate the education. If you want to educate people on it, "Don't leave your car running," that's not, doesn't seem too bright, unattended, but I don't know that it should be illegal.
One of the things that we did in this ordinance is, unlike some areas, we exempted completely those people who do have their vehicles locked and running. So somebody with a second key can certainly run their vehicle either in their driveway or wherever else. And we also do, we exempted those people who have remote starts because with a remote start, once you start the car, even if somebody gets into it, they cannot move it from that. So we're only looking to work with those people who would stop at a QuickTrip or a convenience store and just say, "I'm just going to leave my car running and sit in open and come in," because we have criminals who literally will watch facilities like that when the weather's cold, knowing that's the easiest way to steal a car, just to assist us in prevention.
Well, Your Honor, I guess, I feel like we're making it illegal everywhere, not just for people warming up a QuickTrip. You're warming up your car on your driveway, and I understand that it's not going to be illegal for people to have the remote locks, but it's almost like we're penalizing people who don't have newer model cars and don't have that. I just think it's a personal freedom issue.
Certainly, if it's the will of the council, it can be amended to exempt on private property. It's your decision where you want to go with it. Councilman Shaver, you have comments?
It's an interesting approach, because one of the analogies, it seems to me, as far as I know, there's nothing says, "I can't leave my house unlocked when I leave." So what's really different if I leave the car unlocked, running? See, you've got, excuse me, there's some checks and balances with insurance companies here. I think they frown when you try to collect. I think there is some checks there with the insurance companies may not pay if the vehicle is left running. So I have some problems with this as a...
Is there enough concern to offer an amendment, and Mr. McDonald can come up with the language on, to initially start out with convenience stores, those type things, but exempt your own personal residence? I mean, it's your decision what you want to do.
Your Honor, I'd be glad to make that amendment, that if it's in your own personal driveway, that that would be exempted.
Okay. Mr. McDonald, do you have language for that?
Well, just making an exemption that says it will be exempted if the car is in the personal driveway of, on the personal property of the owner.
So Councilman Reeves, motion, so states.
Your Honor, if I might, just looking through the cases that we've had, it looks like approximately about half of them are business locations, about half are in driveways of the thefts that were just running and people walked by and took them.
I think this is a good compromise. Let's start out with the, I won't influence your votes, of course, but you might want to just start out with the those running, excluding, exemption, the residential. Let's kind of monitor and see whether we need to further amend it later on. Maybe a good test for it. But anyway, you heard the motion. Is there a second?
I need to clarify, sir.
Let me get a second, and then we'll get in further.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, you got a second? Okay, further discussion, Councilman Low?
Just to clarify, we're talking about private property, which could be anything, but you were talking about specifically property of the owner.
The residence.
Of the residence.
Right.
Just to make sure we narrowed that down.
Well, and Your Honor, what if you're grandma's house? It's not your house. And you're at a friend's house. I mean, this gets complicated, you know?
Well, I think if we just say your residence as a starting point, then we don't have to get into the other parts of it.
Your Honor, on the proposed amendment, I would support that. I still don't know that I can support the entire ordinance even as amended, but I think this is the right step, and that's less regulation of this, I think, so.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, Your Honor, it seems like we're trying to legislate common sense, and I don't know, you know, you can't fix stupid, so I don't know how we can legislate that.
Yeah. Okay. I think education is good on it. Don't leave your car running. It sounds pretty simple, so.
Further discussion before we vote on the amendment, the amendment for the ordinance that would exempt the residence property, on your own property?
You want me to read the amendment?
Yes, yes, please do.
The exemption will be that subsection A above will not apply when the motor vehicle is located on the residential property of the owner.
Of the owner? Do we need to put that in there?
It did say of the owner.
Okay, you've heard the motion. We've had a motion and a second on an amendment to the 4059. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Now, we would accept the motion to approve, oh, it's the second reading, all right, okay.
No, no, that's the first.
As amended.
As amended, it's the second reading as amended.
Second reading as, did I have a vote on the first one?
Yeah.
First, let's approve the first reading as amended. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
So it's three for Your Honor, and you need to break?
Aye.
Okay.
I think it's four. I voted no.
Let's roll call it.
And let's clarify what we're voting on.
Okay, you're voting on the first reading as amended?
Right.
That exempt residential property. Okay, roll call.
Councilman Edmondson?
No.
Councilman Solon?
No.
Councilman Low?
No.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
No.
I don't think I have to break any tie votes on it, so motion fails. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is introduction and reading of Bill 4060.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right. Councilman Reed?
First reading of Bill number 4060, an ordinance approving amendments to the Adams Farm Tax Increment Financing Plan, amendments to the Tax Increment Financing Contract between the City of Blue Springs Development 3, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to enter into the first amended and restated tax increment financing contract.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve on the first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Fowler?
I did want to show an overhead to have a quick discussion here. This is exhibit four. It's not that focused, I guess. I don't know how to look at it. The, from the city's website on June of 2000, about two years ago, which I believe is probably what's in effect, at least it was out there published for over a year or so. The numbers have bounced around with changes, but this is the revenue side. This is the projected revenue. Total tip on that was 76 million, super tip, 14,7 million, the TDD, not including Walworths, the Walmart Home Depot TDD, and then the CID. That total was 165 million of committed revenue, okay? Now, fast forward to what was in the packet this weekend. Same exhibit on the revenue side. This, the total tip, has gone plus $5.8 million, up to $81 million. The super tip has up a million, et cetera. There's a big switch on the TDDs, but ultimately, this is 11 and a half million dollars more city commitment than we had previous to this. And I tell you what, I, 176 million, obviously, I was against the first 165. Looking at another 11 and a half million of commitment here for the city, for the community, I think it's too much. The total payback in sales tax dollars over the 30 years of this project to the City of Blue Springs is that 15, 15.8 million dollars. Spending 176 million dollars of the community dollars committing that to only get back over a 30-year period, less than a million dollars, is 15.8 million dollars. I've got a problem with that payback. I don't know why we would consider increasing the commitment side of this, and I just don't think it's appropriate to change that. The, on, in current day dollars, those numbers didn't change, but we have on the commitment side. This action tonight is about the direction that the council gave a few meetings back, and that was to start backing the bonds. Well, this is also put in there, and I've got concerns with that. The return, the return on that, you're spending 176 million to get back a potential 15.8, that's like a return for each dollar spent of nine cents. This, tonight, we're moving the project risk from the developer to the citizens. We're committing an additional 11.5 million in tax revenue to the project. It incurs debt well beyond many of our own life expectancies. 78 million is from new taxes not in effect today. The taxes are approved by elected official without a vote of the citizens, and the expected sales tax revenue dollar just isn't there for me. So I've got concerns. I don't know why we're increasing the debt side, or the, our commitment on this project where it's at right now. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Johnson, I know that we have some experts here that possibly could answer some of it. We have our bond counsel and a number of people, so would you like to address it and call whomever you think is appropriate?
Sure.
Your Honor, we have several individuals here. We have both developer representatives, and we have city representatives. From Chris Williams, who is probably best suited to address questions about changes to the TIF plan, David Bouschek, who could perhaps respond to questions involving the amendments to the TIF contract, and Sid Douglas and Dennis Mitchell, who can answer questions about bonds. So, gentlemen, I'm going to look at you and say, Chris, David, is this a question who's best prepared to respond to this particular issue?
Thanks, Eric. Chris Williams, Your Honor. I don't know if I'm best prepared, but if I understand Councilman Fowler's question, on exhibit four, the amount, the total amounts increased, that's the amount of projected revenues. That's not a commitment to spend more of those revenues on this project. Exhibit three is the budget. The TIF budget hasn't changed on how much we're going to spend on the project.
Exhibit three is on the other side of this, and these numbers match dollar for dollar. They go right into exhibit three. If you use all the formulas, that is in current day dollars, but it's, it shows that the commitment on this side matches the total dollars over here. So I do contend that this is our commitment. That's, in the end, we don't know exactly what interest rates are going to be used on this. We don't know all the economic inflation, what the true property values are going to be assessed. So this is a plan, and the plan says that we are committing 176 million, and that's what they're going to come back and ask for if it's not hitting projections. They're going to want to use up to that amount. We've got to have some dollar value that the citizens say no more.
I guess I'm not tracking with you because the commitment of the city, TIF reimbursable amount, is, remains the same as was in, is in the current budget. And the other expenditure columns, that's what our commitment to spend is. On the revenue side, if the revenues go up, it should mean that we pay back those expenses quicker, and there's a quicker payback time.
Okay.
Unless, you know, maybe I'm not understanding where you're going with that.
How about I put this up there and I'll show you?
Sure.
Exhibit four, the total tip revenue is now $81 million. We agree that's revenue. I'm not trying to sell that as anything more than revenue in our commitment. Down here at the bottom of this line is the 23, 203,725, okay? That is the net line I'm there, okay? And if I flip this over, I'm going to come up with that same exact number again, right underneath tip. Right there.
Councilman Fowler, you're talking about on the total tip compared to the other side, where it says TIF reimbursable expenses?
Yes, those are, well, I can bring up the one from a couple of years ago, and these numbers do match up. These are a little bit the net bond proceeds, but if we add up the two lines, Christine, I suppose we're going to be done this before.
Well, we increase the projection of the tip revenue but not increase the expenditure side, so there is a difference in the numbers now with previously.
Well, and I think that comes from this right down here, that this number went from 2% to 4%. We, in other words, if you look at all the proposed, I mean, the projected appraisal values, those are well up from where they were because the inflationary rate has gone from 2% to 4% every year.
Okay, is anybody tracking this?
No.
I think we're all confused. Okay, so clear it up for us, Councilman. Okay, so clear it up for us, Councilman.
I'd like to clear up what the question, or what point is, what's the bottom line?
The bottom line is that we are committing eleven and a half million more dollars than we did before, okay? Yeah, I realize that there's going to be, this is the commitment side of the dollars. They're not, when you flip it over, you're, you're reducing all these numbers down to current value, okay? This, you see how we get down to the, each one of these numbers is just going through a set of formulas to get down to these numbers, which turn out to be, in other words, expenditures. Okay, see how this number matches this number, this number to here, this number up here. See those? See how we track? Two point three. In other words, to have a balanced project, your revenues ultimately match your expenditures. So, your honor, let's quit dancing around it. What is the total commitment dollar value that the city is putting up if it's not one hundred and sixty, one hundred and seventy-six million?
Okay, who can answer that?
How much are the citizens ultimately going to be committed to by the action tonight?
Based on these assumptions?
Yeah. Based on the documents that's been given to us. Your honor, I'm going to defer to David Bouschek and Chris Williams, who are consulting with the, you guys going to take a stab at this?
Good evening, my name is David Bouschek. I'm with the law firm of Gilmore and Bow. We are special counsel and bond counsel to the city. To try to answer the question that seems to be at issue, the, comparing the original project budget to the new project budget, which is Exhibit Three, that's what we consider to be the project budget. The total TIP reimbursable costs, what the city will be paying for from TIP revenues, is exactly the same. The city supplemental, TIP reimbursable column, is exactly the same. That seemed to be the key issue that was, that was being discussed, and the TIP reimbursement amounts remain the same.
You're talking about TIP reimbursement amounts, but how many dollars are committed to pay off those TIP reimbursables? Are you telling me those haven't changed?
The total projected TIP revenue has increased by five point eight million.
Right.
Meaning the project is projected to generate more money than was originally projected.
But, and how much of that new money is going to, could be committed towards going in to paying off the debt? These are tougher economic times. The city's level of commitment is going up.
For the bond issue that's being considered tonight, the only TIP revenue that will be used.
Now, I'm sorry, your honor, but let's not start spinning already. We're, this is, this is in the amended TIP, and we're talking about the total TIP. I don't want, I'm not, we're not talking about just the bond issue tonight. We're talking about the total dollar commitment the citizens could be committed to.
Let me make sure I understand it, because I'm hearing two things, Councilman Fowler. Regardless of how much revenue you generate, you're only going to get reimbursed a specific amount, which has not changed.
That's right, that does not change.
Okay.
You're, yes, but the, the assumptions going into it two years ago were that interest rates and inflation was going to be at X amount. And that, the number that was given to me two years ago was one hundred and sixty-five million, and that was what was approved. And now you're saying if, if that doesn't get it done, just because inflation is going to be tighter, interest rates are going to be higher, then the city's commitment goes up to one hundred and seventy-six million.
I guess I'm feeling a read that into it. If you're only going to be reimbursed a specific amount, that's not going to change it if you bring more revenue.
But it may take more revenue to pay off the higher debt service.
We only have one debt service schedule, and that's for the series of bonds that you are authorized to issue tonight. And the only TIP revenue that's part of that bond issuance is the TIP revenue from the Target store. And that's all we can really talk about as far as TIP revenue that the city would be committing compared to the bonds that the city would be authorizing tonight. And any other future bond issuances, we'll come back and we'll be talking again.
So, so let me ask you about it this way, then. If interest rates just can, just continue to go up, we would continue, the city's commitment would, we just continue to fund more, more for debt service, and our commitment would not have a, have an upper end?
No, there's a particularized debt service schedule that's associated with this bond issue. The, the ordinance that's in front of you tonight has certain parameters with the maximum interest rate. I can't talk with you about what that is, but there's people behind me that can. And there's a specific interest rate that these bonds would be issued under.
Well, I know two years ago, I, when the numbers were approved, that was the upper end of the risk that we were taking, one hundred and sixty-five million. Now it's up to one hundred and seventy-six, and that concerns me, so.
As I said, the amount of TIP reimbursement that goes to the developer from this project stays the same.
Okay, I, I don't think that we're going to be in a position where we're going to satisfy you, Councilman Fowler, so I think we need to move on.
Your honor?
Yes.
I just had a few comments. We're being asked, probably on a different note, we're being asked tonight to make two changes to the Adams Dairy Landing Project. The first is a change to the TIP agreement and the redevelopment plan. We are no longer requiring that before the city proceeds with the issuance of the TIP obligations, that we need execution of leases for not less than seventy-five percent of the shopping center, and the tenants under such leases have open for business. That was in the previous TIP and redevelopment agreement. Now, we will be issuing the bonds not for seventy-five percent of the stores being open, but for zero of the stores being open. And when Target opens in October, that'll be approximately twenty-two percent of the overall project. So we are changing the agreement from seventy-five percent when Target opens to twenty-two percent, and that's a very big change in policy tonight. So that's one thing we're deciding. The second thing we are deciding is that we're being asked to back the bonds for fourteen million dollars for this project. In the staff report, and I'm going to read directly from the staff report, it states that the developer will continue to pursue private financing. However, the developer has indicated to the mayor and staff that there is also the possibility that additional bonds may be needed in the future to help close the remaining back gap. I fear this is just the beginning. I believe RED will be back for more money and for us to back more bonds. In fact, it was alluded to in the letter to you. So I think this, this is going to be happening again. That concerns me. I have concerns about the city backing the bonds for a private developer and placing our citizens at financial risk. In the analysis that staff gave to us, they did a great job of weighing the pros and cons. Some of the things that staff said in their report regarding risk that they're, we're taking is that the city is taking risk if there's a fire or a casualty to one of the stores, if the store is delayed or decides not to rebuild, that the risk is extended to the city for that store for the life of the bonds. Based on risk factors, there is no guarantee that existing bonds will be refinanced, in which case, the city's annual appropriation pledge would be left in place for the entire life of the bonds, which is projected to be thirty years. That's a risk. Because of market conditions, which right now are unstable, and the slowdown in consumer spending, it's possible that the actual revenue produced within the project could fall short, in which case, the shortfall must be filled by the city's annual appropriation. That means our general fund. There's risk. The city may be setting a precedent about giving credit extension for TIP projects. This is inconsistent with our current TIP policy. This is a change in policy. This isn't a casual thing. We are setting a new precedent that we will back bonds for TIP projects. This could have a possible negative impact on the city's future credit rating. It is not the responsibility of our local government to protect the profit margins of a private developer. This is a bailout. We are placing our citizens at financial risk. I very strongly oppose our city taking such a dangerous precedent, and this is definitely a change in our adopted and accepted policies, and I oppose it.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a question to do nothing. Is that not a risk?
The risk that we have, in the letter that we got from Dan Lowe, all they're guaranteeing by our backing this bonds is vertical construction of Target. I contend Target is built. They have a legal obligation to put a parking lot in for Target, and the only guarantee that we're getting from RED by backing these bonds is vertical construction of Target. So, as far as I'm concerned, backing these bonds do not give us any additional stores.
I read it a little bit differently, but we, but to debate it, I don't think is going to change your mind.
Not a bit.
So it's no system mean discussing that. Anyone else? Councilman Lau?
Your honor, my understanding is that these, these bonds are based on the fact that, of the original TIP, and that it is an issuance of funds at an earlier stage than what they normally would have been under the original TIP. So there is no new monies coming in for this project, and this will help to complete the infrastructure to ensure that Target can open, which is part of the agreement under the TIP.
I think you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep. Your honor, I'm sorry, I didn't want to. Again, I see this shifting, shifting the rest of the citizens, and I, I'm after an upper number to how much risk that could ultimately be by the time we start stepping into this, because there could, there could have to be more bond issues down the road. I, I look at a similar project in our neighboring city of Lee's Summit, not, not Summit Woods, but Summit Fair. Summit Fair was approved within a few months of the, of this project for basically the same amount of incentive, probably around, within, within a couple of million dollars. You go look at the retail energy that's going in at Summit Fair and all the new stores that they've got going in over there, and the lists of people, and you look at ours, and you got to say, wow, we're just, we just don't have that kind of energy going on over here. And for us to step in and put the citizens' general fund money at risk, I just say is the wrong thing to do right now. And I encourage our citizens to go look at the difference for two projects about the same money, using the same developer, and just say, hey, which, which is the risky decision here?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Councilman Reed?
It's my understanding that Lee Summit did come to help on, on RED and backing that to make that very successful. And I'm thinking we're going to get the same thing here, if not better.
Your honor, I just want to interject. As far as Summit Fair, they've got about ninety percent vertical construction up. We've got twenty-two percent up with Target, so there's a big difference. If you go through Summit Fair, it's built. And the stores that they're getting, they're getting a Macy's, a J.C. Penney's, a Victoria's Secret, a Coldwater Creek, an American Eagle. It is two totally different projects. But I contend that Summit Fair, and what Lee Summit does, you know, to be honest with you, whether they want to take money out of emergency fund, loan them the money and make interest on it, they obviously are in a much different financial situation than Blue Springs. But just straight vertical construction, that's built. I would venture to say it's ninety to ninety-five percent constructed, where we've got a Target. Big difference.
Councilman Shaver, do you have anything else before we take a vote?
Yes, your honor. I would like to hear RED's response to the statement that Councilman Solon read regarding the possibility of additional bonds being needed in the future.
Stu, would you like to come up and address that?
Julie Jordan, RED Development. Do we need an address? I forget how this works.
No, no, yours is.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say that I'm glad I'm before you tonight, but I miss Dan. He's up expediting our loan for the part of this project, so we're very excited about that, and just kind of another reaffirmation there. And as far as future bond issuances, as you know, this is the partial piece, then we will have a complete bond issuance down the line when the market, the timing of the market and everything works out. So yes, obviously we are, and, and that's what you want, because that's the time when you would be, we do a refunding and hopefully get you guys off of the annual appropriation, if that's what your desire is at the time. So yes, we do anticipate a future bond issuance. Remember, this one is only on Target sales. There are lots of, I mean, I'm trying to respond to a lot of things I've heard up here, but, and I'm sure Dennis can help you on all the cushions that are in place, as far as, as we talked about it quite a bit last time we were together. And we are opening, we're actually ninety-eight percent leased on the junior anchor, anchor lineup here. Summit Fair was begun, was started quite a bit earlier than this project, so the whole timing and everything is different. But we're looking forward to getting Target open. We're in the ground, as you've probably seen if you've been out there, with the stores to the west. And then as the loan progresses, we'll move around as Lowe starts construction and our other anchor, and I, I, you know, we're in great shape as far as that's concerned. Am I, did I answer your question?
Yes, I, let me clarify and make sure I do understand.
Okay.
What, this referral to additional bonds is, is a refinancing, if you will. These bonds would not require city guarantee.
At this point, I would say no. I think what our plan is, is, is if we, you know, down the line, we could issue bonds again based on however many stores we have open, and I'm probably not the expert on that, someone else could tell you that. But the plan would not be to have an annual appropriation. I mean, you can do interim bond issues without that, and that's really not something that would hurt you in any way. It just helps continue to get the public funding in place.
So that would tend to get the, reduce the commitment of the city, the guarantee of the city?
That would be the goal, yes. And the final takeout, that certainly is the plan. But the bond market is something that's difficult to predict, so.
Mr. Johnson, would you like to come in?
Just, just one clarification, because, and, and again, all of this discussion, and these references are in the, the information that's been provided to the city council. There, there certainly is, has been discussions about additional bond issuances in the future. The mayor and I have had several meetings and discussions with Mr. Lowe and Ms. Jordan. We've discussed that, we've looked at that. The, there is no commitment in any of the documents before the council tonight that binds or obligates the city to future bond issues or future backings. It's at the city's sole discretion on when and how that occurs. The developer has certainly put us on point, saying that they will be back to us in late two thousand and nine or first quarter of two thousand and ten to review the status of the project, to evaluate where we are, to hopefully talk about many of the junior anchors that are now coming online. As you know, in, in the documents before you, we're requiring, and our bond counsel is requiring, that the developer give us written commitments from Lowe's and Coles that provide us with commitments for opening dates in two thousand and ten. And again, Mr. Lowe is currently obtaining, again, his words to us, he's obtaining his private financing for loans on the vertical construction. But, but to the point of the bond issue, the city controls that process. We have outlined criteria in the TIP contract that specifies when and how, and we would, we would exercise that and those conditions going forward.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
One question, quick, before you get out of here. An earlier council meeting, a reference was made, I believe, that we were ahead on our leasing percentage compared to Lee Summit, as Councilman Fowler had brought up the Lee Summit project out there. Are we still in that, or has Lee Summit jumped ahead of us on that leasing commitment?
No, they have not jumped ahead of you. And we have J.C. Penny and Macy's, as you know, which comprise half the project, basically. And we've got another probably forty-five thousand feet, maybe fifty, that'll open with those two. And then we're finalizing deals moving into the end of the year and early next year for what we hope will be well over a hundred, so seventy, in the seventy-five percent range, hopefully by two thousand and ten, so we can issue bonds there.
Okay, in comparison to our project, which, as Councilman Solon has said, is only approximately twenty percent up.
No, your, your project is actually, if you look at the junior anchor, anchor lineup, everything, in other words, except for that little lifestyle component in the middle, that's ninety-eight percent committed in one way or another, leased, sold, LOI, fully executed, contracts negotiated, whatever. And the lifestyle component is a little bit slower in the lease-up, so if you took the project as a whole, I think it'd be maybe eighty, eighty-five percent, if you include the lifestyle piece. I haven't calculated that in a while. But for right now, the part that we're, that we're doing the vertical construction on is well, well along.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment, your honor.
Okay.
I would like to say, for the benefit of people who are watching this in the audience, my vote supporting this in no way represents a change in policy. This is an exception. I'm voting it as an exception. It's an exceptional project. It's an exceptional economy. And for that reason, I'm supporting it. It's an exceptional economy, and for that reason, I'm supporting it. But in no way, absolutely no way, am I in favor of changing our city policy.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Seen no other hands raised? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those know?
No.
Okay, 4-2.
Second reading of Bill Number 4060, an ordinance approving the amendments to the Adams Farm Tax Increment Financing Plan, amendments to the Tax Increment Financing Contract between the city and Blue Springs Development 3, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to enter into the first amended and restated tax increment financing contract.
Motion?
Move that bill be approved on a second reading, final reading, and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Solan?
No.
Councilman Low?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Carrie, giving the ordinance, 42, 43.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4061.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4061, an ordinance of the city council of Blue Springs, Missouri, approving a district sales tax administration agreement between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and the I-70 and Adams Dairy Parkway Transportation Development District.
Is there a motion?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know?
No.
4-2.
Second reading of Bill Number 4061, an ordinance of the city council of Blue Springs, Missouri, approving a district sales tax administration agreement between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and the I-70 and Adams Dairy Parkway Transportation Development District.
Move that bill be approved on a second and final ordinance, and assign the final ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Low?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solan?
No.
Carrie, giving the ordinance, 42, 45.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4062.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4062, an ordinance of the city council of Blue Springs, Missouri, approving a cooperative agreement between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and the Coronado Drive Transportation Development District.
Is there a motion?
Move that the bill be approved on its first reading, proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yep. Your Honor?
Yeah, just want to make sure that the public knows this is called Coronado Transportation Development District, but I believe that this is actually the TDD that's going to go on top of Walmart. So, if you're shopping at Walmart, your taxes are getting ready to go up, and that's what's going on here, so.
Okay. For discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know?
No.
4-2.
Second reading of Bill Number 4062, an ordinance of the city council of Blue Springs, Missouri, approving a cooperative agreement between the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and the Coronado Drive Transportation Development District.
Move that bill be approved on a second reading, assign the final ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solan?
No.
Councilman Low?
Aye.
Carrie, giving the ordinance, number 42, 44.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4063.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4063, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds, Adams Farm Project Series 2009 of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the bonds.
Is there a motion?
Move that the bill be approved on its first reading, proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know?
No.
No.
Second reading of Bill Number 4063, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds, Adams Farm Project Series 2009 of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the bonds.
Is there a motion?
Move that be approved on a second and final reading, assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Shaver?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Solan?
No.
Councilman Low?
Aye.
Councilman Reed?
Aye.
Carrie, giving the ordinance, number 42, 46.
Thank you. Next, we have mayoral announcements. I have two. One is, we want to remind you of the University of Missouri Extension will hold an open house tomorrow, an open house in Torre, at their new location, 1106 West Main Street, Blue Springs, on tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30. Certainly, we welcome anyone that would like to to come. Certainly, the extension will be part of the Missouri Innovation Park at some point in time, and we are certainly happy to have them here. We'd invite all of you to come and be present there. Secondly, in the, on the consent agenda, you approved the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board for the Police Department. And some of those members are here tonight, and I'd like for them to stand so you can see them just in case. And one of the things I might note, every member appointed have been a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy. We have two representatives from each one of the districts. We have Chris Levesque, who will chair it. Chris has been very actively involved, and we appreciate Chris. Tom Eckert is vice chair. I don't think Tom is here tonight. Janet Black, Lee Miller, Michelle Weisenborn, and Chuck Zubor. Chuck is back there in the back as well. So, anyway, we appreciate your service. We look forward to working with you. The chief looks forward to working with you and supporting our public safety and our police department. Thank you very much. That brings us to visitors. I have two visitors' speaker appearance forms. Both of those are in relationship to the toll contract, which has already been approved. Did you still like to come and address the council?
Would you?
Okay. Ms. Debbie Clarence?
Claxton.
Claxton?
Claxton.
Claxton, okay. You're one of the owners of one of the toll services?
I am the owner, the one and only owner of the Penns...
Okay, well, point-
Recovery.
Whether you're the owner or one of the owners, point being, the contract has already been approved tonight, but we are willing to listen to you.
Okay. I, I sat here and listened to you guys talk about how you could save the city money and all, and I wrote all you guys the note, which I'm sure that you guys got that and read that, and I guess I just don't understand why we weren't awarded yet. I, I guess, you know, because I am 100% owner and because my son is a convicted felon, are you discriminating against me because of that?
Let, let me answer that. We're, we're not going to get into the whose, whys, and wheres.
Uh-huh.
The point being is this thing was fully vetted by our staff. They came up with a recommendation. Obviously, there was a 4-2 vote tonight to approve their recommendation, and I'm not going to get into specifics on a lot of the things that you're bringing up.
Okay, but do you want to save the city money? Wasn't that the whole point? I mean, we've got the equipment to handle it.
It's more than just saving the city money.
Uh-huh.
There is a process, and staff has done a good job going through that process. It's not all about money. It's about service, about a number of things that they factored in.
Right.
And-
But also, what they factored was, was not truthful on the report that was up on your website that said owner slash president. I am owner. I am 100% owner. I showed you guys proof.